Yeah.
They have to close the, they have to close them.
Oh, close them up.
So the meeting is live, close the YouTube.
I just turned it on. I think it's on YouTube. Video out there. We don't want it on here. Do we start the video from up here? You don't start the video from there, just aside. It's curious, I'll hear it, right? Get into YouTube.
Can you hear me? I, I hear you, but you said, uh, sound really muffled. Very, very muffled sound from you guys. Like, I can hear that you're trying to talk, but I can't really make it out.
Yeah. I'm through this issue, but it shouldn't be. What is this? That's the. I. Yeah, that is. Yeah, that's the point. Is that? That's for. Because there was click here as an option on there. Let me go turn that back. I don't know. Not deserving. Using their speed and. Members at Abilene Core.
All right, here's another test. Looks like it's going through, but no reaction. Oh. It's right on the house mics, obviously. Hey, John, can you hear us?
That is much better.
Hey, there we go. How about you, Andy?
I can hear you.
There we go.
Do you have video?
Yep, we see you.
Oh, I, I see you now. Thank you.
Sorry about that. We had internet that completely went out, so we had to kind of reboot and try to troubleshoot everything, so. Go without that. I will now call to order the November 12th, 2024 City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Mr. Witt.
Here.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Here.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. The principle of justice.
And our first item is approval of today's agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none with your roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes from the October 28th, 2024 regular meeting as well as resolution number 1111224-1, which is the, um, gap waiver resolution.
I move to approve the consent agendas written.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none with your roll call vote, Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item is under public comments communications as a public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone? Okay. Just state your name and address for us, please.
Lance Harmon, 311 Charles Road here in Evelyn. Some of you know me, I lead a countywide grassroots organization called Dickinson County Residents for Open Government. In lieu of the allegations that were leveled by Commissioner Kohoff, I believe in your last meeting, I've had several of our members ask me to speak on their behalf and on my own behalf as well, just to request that the city commission consider seeking out a third party to conduct an impartial investigation to determine whether or not any of those allegations are true or not. That's all I had.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? Facing none.
Mayor Ryan. I would like to just briefly kind of just add to my body of evidence that we need to replace our city manager with someone who is qualified. This is in regards to the RHID in the Golden Belt Heights area. It has come to my attention, uh, you as, uh, Mayor Ryan and Commissioner Witt are aware we created that district in 2022. It has come to my attention that City Manager Marsh has failed to actually file the paperwork to create that district until apparently sometime in 2024. So there's still an open question as to what that means for the city at this point, but it is, I would say, possible and likely that we will actually get. He captured that tax revenue, waiting almost two years to file the paperwork is just more evidence of the lack of competence Mr. Marsh has that we dearly need in this role in the city with so many things happen. Um, I would also, we could potentially bring up Mr. Marsh's attendance record. Just based off of the evidence or based off of the emails that he sent, he has also exceeded the number of vacation days that he's allotted in a year, uh, which I think sets a terrible example for our department heads and other city employees. I, I would echo Mr. Harmon's call for an investigation. And just kind of look to my fellow commissioners here to understand that this is our job. I understand that it's not always fun. It's not always comfortable, but this is what we were elected to do. We are elected to hold the city manager accountable and we need to do our jobs. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our agenda? Seeing none, moving to item seven A, consider approval of the Kansas Quick Claim deed, transferring the drainage management within the Faith Avenue Detention Basin from Highland Homes LP to the City of Abilene. City Manager Marsh, in lieu of Finance Director Johnson. Not sure, is that Carrie? Okay.
Yes, we talked about this at the last meeting, so I don't have anything further to add. Um, you'll just notice in the packet that it was executed by all parties on Highland Homes. Art, so if you have any questions, I can try to answer those.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item? Okay, seeing none, entertaining motion.
I move to approve, um, this Kansas Quick Claim deed, transferring the drainage management within the Faith Avenue Detention Basin from Highland Homes LP to the City of Abilene.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none with your roll call vote, Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven B, consider approval of the bid from Info Send for the printing and mailing of the City of Abilene's monthly utility bills in the amount of $33,664.80 annually. City Manager Marsh.
Uh, Commissioners, in lieu of, uh, Finance Director Johnson having successfully made replacement surgery today. Uh, we still recommend the, uh, amount, the bid from Info Send to four 3366480. Uh, we did, Leanne did reach out to the, send out a, I think she included you guys on that, so you have the information. We still recommend going with Info Send, seeing how it goes for a year, and then if we need to make an adjustment after 12 months, do that. Um, I would be surprised if we have very many, much more than 10 to 20% that sign up over the course of the year, but that could be, we could be proven wrong, but we're not expecting a whole lot of people to, to sign up for the email e-notification.
This is Commissioner Kohoff. I'm curious what efforts have been made. I guess there was a discussion of kind of an all out effort to push people over to the electronic platform. We discussed incentives and penalties, but I guess I was expecting a more robust proposal from the administration on what that would look like before we spend $35,000.
Well, I know there's in the, from, uh, other cities, other municipalities, there are some, uh, incentives being offered. Uh, Valley Center is probably the one that, uh, we like the most, but that's a progressive one, increasing. Or I'm sorry, that's, that's a penalty, not a, uh, not a incentive, but there are some incentives out there where we're more than willing to, to look at doing incentive if the commission so desires. I mean, that's, that's something you have to decide. We, we would recommend it, obviously, but, uh, that's entirely up to the commission. I don't know if we can do penalties other than the late fee that we've already charged for being late. I don't know that, uh, we can do that by law. We'd have to look into that. That'd be, we'd have to consult legally on that, so.
I did hear from several people in Abilene that they want to keep it by mail. They will not pay their bills online. Period. And that's from educated people that are on the internet all the time. Uh, this was just a big thing. I had a couple of different people stop me and say, nope, I'm not doing it. So.
And we've heard that consistently from people that come in, so.
Yeah, I still think it's valid that we push it, and I do like the incentive program, just like the lead service line inventory deal that came out for the $10 credit to the water bill. And I, I know Leanne was kind of spearheading that Tyler Technologies implementation. Um, I think she was still having issues with them getting everything working 100% correctly. Yeah, I was able to go in and do mine, but then I think I've heard from other people that they haven't been able to go in and do it. It's thrown up an error signal, so.
We, we are experiencing a few glitches here and there, and as we work through, continue to move forward and work through it, it'll, it'll obviously smooth out, but yeah, there are some glitches still.
As in my understanding. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was able to pay mine online, but signing up for e-statements, it was thrown in there, so that's it's one of those things I'll try again next month.
Is it my understanding that this has historically always been done by city staff through the office?
As far as sending the bills out?
Correct.
Other postcards, yes.
And so the difference is changing from a postcard to a mailer that needs to be folded.
Stuffing 3,000 something envelopes, yes, that's the difference.
I feel like we've already got, we already have staff that's capable of doing that. And I guess I would like to see what we can get accomplished before the end of the year. And, you know, frankly, I think having that burden on the staff is a good incentive for them to encourage people to sign up for online billing. I would, I would like to hold off and see if we can get 30 or 40 or 50% of the people signed up for e-billing before we spend $35,000 from the city.
And there is just a clarifying point there currently without putting in any staff time or wages into that calculation. We're already spending, uh, $40,660 doing it annually. Uh, this would actually be a savings of seven, roughly seven, 6,99564. And like I said, that's without including staff time and wages, so.
And that savings derived from the postage.
Postage, bulk mailing, yeah. I guess with recognizing cost savings, I wouldn't make a motion to approve a bid from Info Send for the printing and mailing of the City of Abilene's monthly utility bills in the amount of $33,664.80 annually.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Uh, yeah, I would just like to say, I think that we, if we have that much savings in postage, there's certainly a way that we could access that through the city directly. I don't think that that's exclusive to big mail houses. Um, I've done a couple of bulk mailers in the past, and I think that if all that or most of that savings is coming from postage, then we should be able to realize that without the additional expense of, of paying for the operations. Um, that's, I guess I'm going to vote against it. I'd like to see the city make a concerted effort to convert everybody to electronic through the end of the year and then reassess, because we are locked into that. Even if we get 50% of people signed up before the end of the year, my understanding is with this proposal, we're locked into that price.
I believe Leanne did state that it was on a tiered system, so as the numbers go down, the cost goes down as well, but.
Do you have an understanding what that is, that you could explain it to us?
Just what Leanne told us all in the public meeting last time.
Yeah, but saying it's a tiered system doesn't give us a detailed explanation of what the cost will be. It could be, I mean, likely it's going to be more expensive per mailer as the number goes down, right?
Well, if we sign a 12, 12-month contract with Info Send, then, um, we'll be locked into that price, but as we go down, we can certainly, uh, or as, if people sign up for it, which I, I think again, 10 to 20% is probably more realistic than anything else. But I don't know that we can, I think we're locked into that price, yes, for a year, but we would look at it after a year and say, okay, we're at, we do have 30, let's say we do have 30% signed up, then what's that going to cost us? Um, so that would, um, we would definitely look at it after a year.
Yet on top of that, at that point, once we do have an actual number of what are signing up for electronic statements, we could also do a new cost analysis on keeping it in-house and see if that is a cost saving, so it doesn't necessarily tie our hands forever. But like I said, I, I like that we realize the $7,000 savings in the meantime without, and the one-time savings of 10 to 20,000 for the folding and stuffing machine, so.
And this is a cost borne by the utility fees. Right.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none with your roll call vote, Commissioner Eisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Nay.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We have no items for discussion, so our next item is nine A, City Managers Report, City Manager Marsh.
Uh, Commissioners, today will be some department news. Uh, from the Police Department, Hannah and Jason have been meeting with the Central Kansas Mental Health Association about expanding their mobile crisis program. The CKMH is expanding their service area to Dickinson County. The unit is currently available Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM and expected to provide 24/7 services by summer of 2025. The unit consists of a case manager and a crisis staff member who can provide support to law enforcement to prevent people in crisis from having to go to the ER or jail in appropriate situations. This should be a valuable resource for Abilene PD, as there are many times they deal repeatedly with citizens experiencing, experiencing mental health issues that do not meet criteria for hospitalization or for hospital intake. The Police Department works to calm them down and offer resources the individual in crisis may not be aware of. The Mobile Crisis Unit will provide an option to call, especially after hours. The Mobile Crisis Unit will provide an option to call, especially after hours, to respond to the situation and freeing up the officer to continue with their normal activities. If the number shows sufficient need, there may be a possibility to have a full-time unit for the county. From the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Abilene CBB has been awarded a nine thousand, eight hundred dollar Art Kansas Tourism Marketing Grant to support the Kansas Gunsmoke Trail two-point-oh initiative. The Kansas Gunsmoke Trail highlights cowboy-themed attractions in four historic sites, Abilene, Wichita, Hays, and Dodge City. They all played significant roles in the storyline of Gunsmoke, the longest-running western in television history. From Public Works, as you probably saw online today, Public Works will be assisting the BNSF Railroad in getting the Northwest, Northwest Eighth Street and Washington intersection crossing repaired. The crossing will be closed on November twenty-second, excuse me, twenty-first for two days, weather permitting. And then they will also be doing Christmas trees and decorations will be going up starting tomorrow. So. And Community Development, they've met one of their department goals to revamp permit applications, making them more user-friendly. Each application has been revamped to include all the necessary components for customer convenience and staff review. A handout is included with each application outlining the necessary information required for the permit being applied for. The goal is to streamline the process and deter miscommunication with customers. The newly revamped forms went live on Friday, November eighth. Check them out online at the city website, and that's all I have.
Next item is recess of the regular meeting.
Everybody good with moving right to the study session?
I'm good.
And yeah, we're good time-wise for that, so. I move that we recess the regular commission meeting and resume the study session right away.
I second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Bye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, or motion carries. We are in recess. I will now open the November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, City of Abilene, Kansas, City Commission Study Session. Our first item is two A Fee Schedule Resolution. City Clerk Moore.
Mayor and Commissioners, the fee schedule was looked over this year again to see if we wanted to do any changes. We did make a few recommendations. They are listed on the agenda form plus highlighted in yellow, and then also the ones we want to remove are in red. I do have a few that we want to add since this has gone out in the packet. Correct? For solar permits, solar permit ground-mounted, twenty-five dollars, roof-mounted, base fee twenty-five dollars. Each additional one thousand dollar in value, three dollars and fifty cents, and additional inspections, twenty-five dollars. And we're open for questions.
I had one question on electrical post refundable deposit. How's that gonna be tracked and when's it gonna be paid? That's, that was one thing that I was kind of questioning on there.
We'll keep a separate, kept a separate file, if you will, for those. We won't cash any checks. If it's a check, if it's online, if it's credit card payment, we'll just deposit it and then refund it as soon as the event is over.
And is that with that refundable, refundable deposit, are they, do they get a key, like for the boxes, or how does that?
No, we'll still open it and close it for them, but that's just in case there's any damage done. And again, it's just a thought, and it's all up to you guys.
I just wasn't sure how we'd track it if.
So whoever, whoever unlocks it will mark any damages at that time, take a picture, and then we go back to close it up.
Okay.
Is City Attorney Martin in the room?
Yes.
Okay. On the issue of the solar fees, I know there are some statutes that kind of limit what can be charged to solar customers. Have you had a chance to review that?
I have not. But I would be happy to do so between now and the next meeting.
Okay, I think I, uh, Evergy kind of got their hands slapped here a few years ago for some of the things that they were doing, and I'd hate for us to run afoul of the same statutes.
Thank you for making me aware of that. I will look into that and work with staff if we need to make any adjustments.
Uh, did have one other question for staff. What is the reason for lowering the cost of the asphalt millings so dramatically?
Those are un, what we call unclean millings, and we have not moved very many of them. If, I think it's been very few since I've been here, and you can go pretty much anywhere in the area and get clean milling, what they call clean millings, which have been screened and aren't clumpy like ours are for five dollars a, a ton, so this just helps, hopefully to help move them, because they're getting hard, and the harder they get, the harder it is gonna be to move them.
What is the inventory of those?
I know it's not scientific, but how about a large pile?
Well, sounds good.
Well, over a thousand tons.
Well, over a thousand tons.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further questions for staff on the fee schedule resolution?
No.
Um, I did have one question real quick here on the water reconnection fee. Can you explain that one? The rationale they're increasing that, but then also doing something that requires less labor?
Not sure I follow, but the water reconnection fee was hopefully deterrent, so people don't, or we don't have to shut it off. Right now, we have to go out and shut it off, and if we thought by increasing the fees, that would allow us to generate the revenue or hopefully generate enough funds to start purchasing the shut-offs where we can just shut it off from the office. Those, those meters cost quite a bit more. We did a, we did a, Leanne went out on the Finance Officers site, and most cities do. Fifty dollars is pretty common, some are more. There are a few that are less, but fifty dollars is pretty common.
My concern with that is that people who are getting their water shut off are probably not in a position where their budget can afford another fifty dollars, so I guess I don't really see any problem with the rest of them, but I would be, uh, well, I understand the deterrent nature of that. Um, I think that's gonna be borne by the people who can least afford it.
Any further questions for staff on that item? Okay, seeing done, we'll move into two B Longevity Pay Resolution. City Clerk Moore.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the resolution to approve the longevity, longevity pay that is paid annually um, for employees that have been with the city for several years, starting year five through twenty-five. I'm open to questions if you have them.
What is the expected cost of that for this year?
Sixteen thousand, two hundred.
On that cover page for the item, it gives you, at the very bottom on that fiscal note, it gives the amount budgeted in the twenty-four budget as well as the, um, actual amount payable down there.
Thank you. I'm working my way there. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff on that item? Seeing none, we'll move into two C Engineering Services RFQ. City Manager Marsh.
Uh, Commissioners, the RFQ for Engineering Services went out on October first of twenty-twenty-four, and responses were due October fifteenth of twenty-twenty-four. We sent the RFQ to seven vendors and received five responses. There was a committee of four who reviewed and evaluated the responses. They were Brendan Ryan, Brad Anderson, Corey Jones, and myself. Evaluation scores were based on vendor requirements, detail, and scope and evaluation. All outlined in the RFQ. Average the evaluation scores in each category for each response. A copy of the RFQ, the sample evaluation form, the consolidated evaluation form, and the total score spreadsheet have been included in your packet, as well as a copy of each response was sent, was set separately to each commissioner. Uh, after discussion, we would recommend executing a master agreement for a period of five years with Olson for Engineering Services described in the request for qualifications.
Any questions for staff on that item?
I believe our previous terms have been three years. Is there a reason why you're suggesting five years?
We have a lot of projects that, uh, that take longer than three years. We're, in fact, we're in the middle of some right now. Five years is, seemed a more reasonable time to allow engineering services to, to be conducted, so um, I think it gives them more time to, to work through with, uh, between application on, on a lot of things, or determining the funding, and then by the time the engineering and the design and, and depending on whether it has to go to KDHE for, uh, for their approval as with, excuse me, with water and sewer, uh, projects. Uh, it just, it makes sense, it made sense to, to staff to move it to five years.
I'm gonna just say I'm not going to vote in favor of Olson on this project. I think we've seen with the experience we had on the fourteenth and Van Buren, um, they came up with a three or four million dollar solution when a three hundred thousand dollar solution would have done the trick. Um, I think that and, you know, the the other thing is, uh, they seem to have uh, found a friend in you, Mr. Marsh, uh, when we're approving their hundred and fifty thousand dollar engineering services for a four hundred thousand dollar grant that we haven't been awarded for the, uh, re-mill on Buckeye Street. Um, I just feel like you guys have gotten a little bit too cozy, and I don't think it's in the interest of taxpayers, uh, to continue working with Olson. I I think there's probably some other examples. I guess the, another one that comes to mind is the, was it a sixty thousand dollar uh, proposal that you had in front of us to do some drawings for a new visual for the parking lot at the Civic Center? I, I think kind of the way that we've done this, or the way that at least since I've been on the commission, um, has been, uh, fairly unpalatable, um, and I think to the detriment of taxpayers. And, um, I guess I'll defend that to the death, but I think that we've got some opportunities to work with some engineers who are more local. I'm looking at this evaluation sheet here, and I'm not sure, uh, number one, that Mr. Marsh can be subjective, uh, objective, I'm sure you can be subjective in your assessment here, but looking at the evaluation, one of the assessments is the responses twenty pages or less. I'm not sure how a response to an RFQ uh, is a way to, the number of pages in a response to an RFQ is a judge of what kind of a civil engineer that you've got. Um, so again, I, I don't really trust the objectivity of, uh, certainly Mr. Marsh, or frankly, the process here in assessing these. Um, but I will be looking for an alternative to our current service provider for the reasons stated.
Mayor Ryan, you were on the, this review committee. Can you talk about your experience?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we did review, um, those five that, that submitted RFQs. Um, I mean, I'll give, uh, everyone that I thought did a great job credit. I thought Olson, Call Valley, and BG all put together great presentations. Um, I, and then we, we're all, you know, doing these independently. Um, and we all came to the same conclusion. But we've had, I mean, I know there's talking points on fourteenth and Van Buren that, doing the same project for three hundred some thousand dollars versus three million, it's not the same project at all. Um, the parking lot for the Civic Center, uh, no fund, taxpayer funds were expended for that project. Um, what else was there? The hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the mill and overlay and, and stormwater drainage, sidewalks, all of that on Buckeye. Um, once again, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars has not been expended. Um, that is for, if the, you know, if the project goes through, that's for the engineering design, all of the aspects of it to meet KDOT's requirements, since it was done in conjunction with a KDOT, um, C-Clip grant or C-Clip project, so. Um, like I said, I thought all three of those that I mentioned, uh, put together very good proposals. Um, we were all very impressed with Olson. And it was pretty, pretty unanimous on the recommendation, so. Like I said, we all four did it independently, but but all three did a great job. We all discussed that during our debrief after we compared notes on all of our rankings, um, but we all came to the conclusion that we thought Olson was the best in that RFQ process as well as, um, with all the projects we have currently going with them. Um, we think is that, I guess connectivity and, and the timeline makes a lot of sense too, so.
I didn't, uh, see there, I only got one form. I'm not sure I saw all the results. Can you make sure those are sent out to all the commissioners, Mr. Marsh?
Should be in your packet.
There's only one form. I'm looking for the responses from each individual who assessed these.
I did, we did not include each individual. I don't think that's necessary. We, you have, you have the composites of everybody's, uh, review, so.
I'm requesting the individual response forms. Can you please send those out to all the commissioners?
If the commission votes with three yeas, I will send them out to all the commissioners.
I will, um, we can't take any action in this study session, so I'll suggest that we do that at the next regular meeting. Uh, Shayla, can you put that on the agenda?
Yes.
And then I think it would be appropriate to move the process back another two weeks to vote on that.
I guess we'll make that determination once the votes are tallied, so.
Mayor Ryan, we can't vote on that. We can't see that information until we vote on it at the next meeting, so I think it's inappropriate to, I mean, are we gonna hand it out to everybody and then make a decision right on the spot? I don't think that's appropriate.
I mean, you have the composite giving the average of everyone's evaluations. I'm not sure why each one, having the evaluation form from all four of us is really that important.
I think when someone's objectivity is called into question, it's absolutely important.
I'm not calling into question anybody's objectivity, so.
I'm not either.
I think. I guess we shouldn't be surprised on that. Mr. Ryan, you're, uh, you were correct that we didn't spend any money on that parking lot, and that's because the city commission voted against spending money on the parking lot. The, the point still stands, though, that we did an entire comprehensive plan for the city for less money than what our current contract engineering services provider wanted to quote us for doing some drawings. That was drawings. That was not a full plan. It was not engineering. It was not moving any of the services. It was drawings for a parking lot in the city. And to further that point, the, on fourteenth and Van Buren, you're correct, that wasn't the same plan, but Olson stood in front of us for six months, I believe, and told us the plan that we were asking for wouldn't be approved. Would not be approved. He said it would not be approved, and then when we asked him to do it and presented to KDOT, he did it, but he's, he did it without the sidewalks that were absolutely integral to the project, that, like, the whole purpose of the project. This is, this is not serving the city in the way that we need to be served for our engineering services.
Again, you're entitled to your opinion, Commissioner Kohoff. Um, I'd look for the opinions of some of the other commissioners on here. Um, I'm, I'm pretty certain I know what you think. Um, you obviously don't want Olson, so I don't know what's worth talking about it more and keep beating in the dead horse as you talk through these items, so. Um, I'd be interested to hear from either Commissioner Meisenberg or Commissioner Miller and what your thoughts are.
Well, I think, I think we had four people look it over, and, I mean, they agreed with Ron Marsh, but the other thing I'm saying, and this is probably totally off-topic, is since I've been on this commission, I feel like alls I've done is kind of watched John be mean to Ron, and it gets really tiring, like, I'm learning, but it's also, I just feel like it's not very nice. So I'm all about being nice and just not having anyone be attacked. I mean, I've heard just come about it in a nice way or something. I just feel like it's personal. And it, we're looking out for our community, and so I guess it's really hard for me to sit here and I have to watch him sit here and listen to you constantly ask him to resign, say everything bad he's doing, and it's just draining. I'm a counselor for my job. I constantly am with people that have experienced trauma and had bad things happen, and I come here and it's like, I dread this more than any other part of my day because you are so mean to him. It's just old, so that is my opinion.
I certainly respect your opinion, Commissioner Meisenberg. I certainly respect your opinion, uh, Commissioner Meisenberg. Um, I also, um, if, for example, in your role, you have to have qualifications to have your role. You cannot just, anybody can go in and do your job. And Mr. Marsh, when he applied for this job, didn't have the qualifications that this job required. He's shown us through his content.
Commissioner Kohloff, I'm going to interrupt you again.
Please do not interrupt me. Please do not.
I will, because you keep.
I'm going to keep talking here. I'm going to say the same thing. All the, you guys, I'm, I'm not lying. I'm not lying at all. And you, Mayor, uh, Commissioner Witt?
You could be.
Okay, I'm incompetent. Can you, can you explain? Do you want to tell the, the commission and those gathered here what you told me when you hired City Manager Marsh?
What are you alluding to? Because we used to have a lot of conversations until I realized you don't listen to anybody unless they already have your opinion.
That's not even, not even remotely true. Not even remotely true.
I will, I will address the one. It was a preferred qualification. It was not a required qualification. So we're, we need to keep on the item that we're discussing, which is the Engineering Services RFQ. Commissioner or Vice Mayor Miller, did you have any opinion on that?
I, I, I'm happy with, uh, what Olson has provided, so I, I don't have any objection. I think they're, um, very thorough and it's up to us to decide what if any path we want to choose. So I'm okay with that.
Do we have any further questions for city staff on the Engineering Services RFQ? Okay, seeing none, we will move into item two D Dickinson County Replat of the Courthouse Edition, Community Development Director's.
Okay. I do have the large document here. If you guys would look at it, um, like to look at it at some point, I can get it out, um, but obviously knowing that it won't get approved until next time. Um, so the final replat for the courthouse addition was attached to the agenda packet for your review. Um, we had both city staff and Olson Engineering review it. There are no, um, no issues that have been identified. Um, what this really boils down to is just a cleanup of their records. Um, as you know, the Dickinson County Courthouse recently completed, um, a vast expansion and historic rehabilitation project. Um, and this is just cleaning up all the records pertaining to the parcels in that vicinity. So in the past, there were three different plats that made up that area. Now it is just streamlined into one. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November fifth and recommended approval of the final replat with a vote of six to zero. Um, if you have any questions, I can try to answer those. And also, um, Janelle Dokendorf, the county administrator is here as well, if you have any questions. But pretty straightforward.
Before I open it up, Janelle, do you have anything that you necessarily want to address or just here for questions? Okay, just wanted to make sure since, appreciate you being here. Do we have any questions for staff on the Dickinson County, uh, replat of the courthouse edition? Thank you. All right, next, consider motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, move to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're adjourned.